Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Commisso. Mr. Conti. Ms. O'Shea.
Here.
Ms. Feigh. She's here. Mr. Flynn. Ms. Goby.
Here.
Mr. Henry. Mr. Igo. Mr. Kimbrel. Ms. Cornage.
Here.
Mr. Crasher.
He's here.
He is here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Robinson. Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you very much. We're going to ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Goby. And followed by a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Again, we'd like to thank you all for coming out on this cold evening for our, the meeting of Monday, November 20th. We'll now begin our public comment period, which allows members of the public for the opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on a subject of their choice. I believe we have quite a few signed up to speak tonight. And I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the first speaker.
Taisha Gafar Ajayi.
Just state your name and your address. This your first time doing this?
No.
Okay. Well, state your name and your address, please. Thank you.
First of all, good evening, common council members, present. My name is Taisha Gafar Ajayi. My background is nursing, real estate, aesthetics. I am the current member of the American Muslim Society here in Albany. And I'm also a member of the Empire State Board of Producers. I'm here to express my grief about the the channel at Albany being closed down for about six months or more. And I have come to various meetings held in this building to express my concerns about this matter. And I was told that something would be done. And at this point, nothing has been done proactively. You know, enough is enough, really. The public has been expressing their want and their concerns and needs about this access channel. And it seems, it appears that to no avail, it just fell on deaf ears. That their voices just be heard just for the moment. And I, I would like to see some action now. Some action now. I, I don't want to hear we working on it. I need to see some, some productivity. I need to see some action. So we know that what you saying to us is true. We have a saying in Islam. Do not judge a man by what he say, but judge him by what he does. Because that is what's going to tell what's in the heart. And I pray that we'll be able to record our shows and, and to be able to use the studio what it was intended for. I think it's very important to listen to us. We have, time and time again, have given examples of resolutions to the problem. And still, there's talk about having the library run and manage it. And I believe that's definitely a conflict of interest. Why aren't our voices being heard? I don't, I don't understand it. I, I, I just don't understand it. And I'm going to say this, let God will be done. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for coming this evening. Our next speaker, please.
Kimberly Crepp.
Hi. My name is Kimberly Crepp. I'm the president of the Empire State Board of Producers, as well as the producer and host of a public access television show called Capital Cannabis. I am also the director of the Capitol District Cannabis Consortium. For more than two years, we have been pleading, not only with the, with the Oversight Board, but with the Common Council in order to address the debacle of the public access studio. Now, we are tired of being ignored. How many times are we going to be ignored? The Times Union did an article with the wants of the people. We are the people. We are the people you are here to represent and you are not representing us. In November of 2016, I went on an interview for the Public Access Board position with Dorsey, with Vivian, and with the chairman of the board, Mario. At this interview, I explained what the issues were with public access. Nothing has been done. The two board members that were hired instead of me have done nothing to enforce or fulfill their fiduciary responsibility. The ad hoc committee, Vivian, Dorsey, Mike, are sitting here watching it implode. Implode. How many times does the public, we the people, who are you here to serve? Dorsey's not even listening and I'm talking about her. You heard what I said, Dorsey?
Instead you not engaged in direct con- conversation with the members. Just make your presentation.
First Amendment.
No, you are allowed to make your presentation.
Our First Amendment rights are being ignored.
I'm not denying you your First Amendment.
You are.
No, I'm not. I'm telling you that you can speak.
You are. We're being ignored. My right as a constituent is to be heard.
But we do not engage in one-on-one conversation. You're speaking to the body.
Well, when I'm being ignored and I'm addressing specific members of the Common Council, I think that they should pay attention. On October 25th, the Empire State Board of Producers sent the ad hoc committee a letter offering our services to help manage the studio for free. We have a full team of IT tech producers, directors, web builders, everything that's needed for the studio. And we haven't had a response other than who's on the board from Dorsey. And then we have been ignored because I am on the board. So, if you don't like me, that's your problem. I'm a resident in Albany and I am the people and you are here to serve me. So our next step is to petition the state and the federal government to address this lackadaisical attitude from the Common Council who's not meeting the needs of the people. Much to my chagrin, I'm watching TV on Saturday morning to make sure my show is on. My show is not on. Instead, it's a Common Council meeting with Nancy Benedict on the microphone talking about she can't watch public access. We have addressed this day in and day out on a monthly basis. I work. I go to work at 7:15 in the morning. I am here after work. I have to sit here and wait. All right? You guys are ignoring us. You're ignoring the public and you're taking our money. We pay these franchise fees. We pay these taxes for you to do your job and you're not doing your job. Stop ignoring the public. Where the people has spoken, how many people want Channel Albany back on the air that's in this audience? Hello? Can I get a response? Because they're really not listening to us. That's, that's the best we can do. That's the best we can do? That's why nothing's getting done because y'all really don't care. But you're going to care because I'm an anarchist and a yippee. And we're going to make sure that none of y'all get elected again to office. So kiss your seats goodbye. You know, we were very nice this election and didn't go out against y'all with the documentation of you ignoring our stuff and keep looking at me smugly because I'm talking to you too. What, what, what you going to do? Gangster?
Dorsey. Gangster in the Common Council.
You're a gangster in the Common Council.
No, excuse me, excuse me.
Gangster in the Common Council. You heard me, but you can't respond to our requests. You heard me, but you can't respond to our respects, request, October 25th. You didn't respond to one member on the Empire State Board of Producers. You're not doing your job.
Excuse me.
This is how you represent the people? This is how you represent the people?
Ms. Crepp.
This is how you represent the people?
Ms. Crepp.
I'm not scared of you, Dorsey. We can't take it outside. You heard? And put this on the air. Because you're not showing, you're not showing on your website. You're not showing on your YouTube channel the community standing here. You're, you're not showing the episodes to show the community. You're not transparent. You're corrupt.
Um, excuse me, can we take, Richard, can we take a 10-minute adjournment for recess, please? And I will, I'm going to, we're going to take a, a 10-minute recess. And this is as, as the person presiding over this meeting tonight, we're here to hear exactly what you have to say. Wait, I'm, I didn't, I let you speak. No, I did not. I, why, I have no. Excuse me. Would somebody please, um, get them downstairs? Excuse me, you're disrupting the meeting, Ms. Somebody, um.
I would like to request that the remaining speakers, we are, to let you know that we are here to hear exactly what you have to say. We are not here to be combative. And if you want to argue, then this is not the place for that. We want to hear what you have to say. And I know that this has become a very sensitive issue. And for you to think that we don't care, I think is, you are talking with lack of knowledge. Because that is not true. That's how you feel? Can I speak? Because I'm not going to argue with you. Can we, um, have a recess because, young, young lady?
President, we don't need a recess. What we need to be is respected in our seats. We do listen. If we were not listening, we would have walked out of the room. But we sat here and listened to her disrespect us. Because you are here to represent us. You're not representing us. Two years of documented begging this government in order to do their jobs and you refuse to do it. Because all you want to do is have us pay this damn franchise fee so you can stick it in your genital fund. Well, you know where you can really stick it. How about that? Because we are the people. We pay these bills and we pay our taxes. How many people here have been numerous times, numerous times saying the same thing over and over again? We're watching our television shows when they're supposed to be on. And we have Nancy Benedict begging you to put public access back on TV. And it's not on TV for two years. Your mayor's office is ignoring us. You're ignoring us. The ad hoc committee is ignoring us. No, we're not going to. First Amendment, First Amendment. Try the rest of this. It's called First Amendment. Try it. First Amendment. First Amendment. No, you passed the Constitution. You don't know the Constitution. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having this thing right here.
As I tried to state, we know that this is a very serious and sensitive issue for people. And we are here to listen to whatever comments that you have to say and to present to us. But I will tell you this, that if you're going to talk with us and share information, we're open to that. But this cannot be a shouting match. Otherwise, nobody's going to be heard. And we cannot carry out the business that is indeed going to affect what you are here about tonight. So I would ask that you give us the respect to have the opportunity to listen to you in presenting your comments. And the public comment period is just that. You have the opportunity to do that. But it is not an opportunity for you to enter into dialogue with council members. That it's, you are talking to everyone when you're going, presenting your comments. But I would ask that you not engage in conversation with individual council members. If I could please ask the remaining speakers to, to adhere to that. I would be appreciative. So we're going to, so council members, I know we said, I would like to see us continue with the meeting. And if we can proceed without being disruptive on either side of the gate, I think that we can get things done tonight that may be to some satisfaction to let people know that we are indeed moving forward on this issue. So with that being said, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the next speaker.
Mr. Joe Cologne.
Good evening, Mr. Cologne.
All right. My name is Joseph Cologne. I'm a community member. I've started the Albany New York Music Awards, which is a platform for unsigned local artists in our area. And we give them the platform to perform. We help them with marketing promotions and distributing. So maybe from regional, locally, they can get national and regional exposure. We've also started like an urban poetry forum called Bar Wars New York. And it's basically urban poetry. I've been associated with Channel 18 for almost three years now. In the three years that I've been involved with the station, I want to say two and a half years, there's been in-house turmoil. I try not to get too much into the politics because I'm, I'm into results. Like she said earlier, I don't want to talk about it. I want to be about it. That's what I do. But us not having the proper access to the studio equipment, you know, is just depriving our area. Just maybe a month or two ago, I was fortunate enough to record the Albany Land Bank and the opportunities that it brings to my urban community. And that, and that footage is still sitting in a camera locked up in the station. These are just, you know, little things like, you know, I was born and raised in the South Bronx. And music and sports is what has me here today 50, 57 years later, you know? I don't, I don't know how many of my friends are no longer here. I've learned how to make money legally off my music. And I love giving the opportunity to anybody who has the ambition and the desire to not get disillusioned by what the streets have to offer. And you are doing a, a major injustice, or let me rephrase that. A major injustice happening to my community not having, bad enough that they don't even know that the station is there and what's available to us. That's why we're not here. You know what I mean? We don't really know. That's bad enough, but just not having the access for somebody like me who's willing to give time and effort to bring awareness to things, you know? And if I can influence any of my youth out there, you know, with the four elements of hip-hop, graffiti, breakdancing, DJing, and rapping. That's what, that's what our, our home is based on. Those four elements, these children today gravitate and then we redirect. We don't try to preach and everything else, you know? Maybe I'm not the person that's to give the literature, but I, I know what I can do and I bring them. And then I find the people who can redirect. You know what I mean? Dressed for Success, Conscious Mind Series, these are just a few organizations that have reached out to us. Albany Social Justice Center, which is a blessing to us and allows us to use their facility to bring these events on a continuous basis. When statistically, statistics say that certain things cannot be done in my neighborhood, I'm on first and Judd with 150 people doing a rap battle. No problems. You know what I mean? So this is something that I would love to continue to do. I'm a big part of the station and the station is not there. I don't really want to get too much. We'll let other people get involved with the politics of that. I'm just bringing to you what I deal with and what I constantly have to continuously, like, the station being closed, not access to the, um, um, the equipment. Just two months ago, there was a $12 piece. I went to New York. I went to B&amp;H on 38th and 9th Street, or 38th, 30, 34th and whatever, 8th Avenue. The piece was $12. You know, I was going to buy it, but then the paperwork, there was a problem. There had to be the 501(c), the not-for-profits. And it was just, it came to a point when, I do the same thing with the Social Justice Center. And before I even got involved, they're like, here's four applications or, you know, to fill out. And if you need anything else, here it is. Maybe it's not what we're doing, it's how we're doing it. But there is a serious, serious problem at Channel 18. And, and, and I would just like to see it resolved. I've, I've stood here and I see the frustration with Kim. You know what I mean? And, and there's a lot of other people like Mark and Keith that, that go above and beyond helping me provide what, what's important. You know what I mean? We've recently grabbed a kid at 16 years old. He's been with us for two years. And just last week or two weeks ago, we got him to dance on MTV. You know what I mean? And, and I just think that if the, if the, if this opportunity, the station, which, you know, if you, if you have any interest in music and videos and, and anything, the, the opportunities are there. And by this, by the in-house friction and, and political BS, man, nobody's moving on a $12 piece. And that piece is holding my microphone up. You know, the light is out for seven months. You know what I mean? And then I, then I sit here, because I've been to these before, and I hear about all this money and the budget and all this other stuff. And I'm like, that's all great, man. Because on paper, I realize it's one thing, but I live in the reality of this. And the reality of this is that there is a serious issue at Channel 18. And it, it's really long, long overdue. Because like I said, in the three years that I've been there, it's been almost two and a half years that there's a problem. And it's, the problem is so, so serious that, you know, it's come to a point where I understand that the locks would just change and people are.
And it brought you out here tonight. So I really appreciate, and I know that you are very effective in the community. And I know that for you to be here tonight, it's very serious for you. And, and I understand that.
If, if, if I, and I don't take this the wrong way, and I, and I, and I mean this very peacefully, like.
I'm going to have to cut you off.
I love to see some results. And if I need to bring half the hood here, then that's what I'll do.
Okay.
Unpeaceful tip. But we need to know that, you know, we have a voice out there and we're not being heard.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cologne. We're going to ask that if you could refrain so we can continue from the applause. We can continue with hearing from everyone and move, and make sure everyone gets the opportunity to speak tonight in a timely manner. Could you call the next speaker, please?
Alana Klein.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak for you tonight. Tonight, I'm going to continue my comments from November 6th rather than speak on a new topic. How many of you have never disrespected the flag? And it's more than likely that, than not, that you have desecrated, yes, desecrated the flag. I've researched the entirety of the United States Code 36, Chapter 10, commonly referred to as the Flag Code. I explain, I point specifically to subsections 171 and 174 to 176. Every single time I've heard the anthem played on TV or at live sporting events, people start clapping and cheering at the beginning of, or the land of the free. Subsection 171 states in part, during rendition of the National Anthem, when the flag is displayed, all present except those in uniform should stand at attention facing the flag with the right hand over their heart. Our own commander in chief is guilty of violating subsection 171. There are many people who display the flag 24/7 regardless of weather. Many of these people are in violation of subsection 174a, which states, is universal custom to, to display the flag only from sunrise to sunset on buildings and on stationary flag staffs in the open. However, when patriotic effect is desired, the flag may be displayed 24 hours a day if properly illuminated during hours of darkness. And subsection 174c, the flag should not be displayed on days when the weather is inclement, except when an all-weather flag is displayed. I have personally seen numerous violations of subsection 175i. Quote, "When displayed either horizontally or vertically against a wall, the union should be uppermost into the flag's own right, that is, to the observer's left." When displayed in a window, the flag should be displayed in the same way, with the union or blue field to the left of the observer in the street. And finally, my favorite, subsection 176. The subsection is entitled, "Respect for the Flag." That's right. Ironically or not, standing for the anthem is literally not mentioned in the section titled, "Respect for the Flag." 176c, the flag should never be carried flat or horizontally, but always aloft and free. I'll lengthy deal with field-sized, field-sized flags where, wait for it, people complain about players not, who are protesting. 176d, the flag should never be used as wearing apparel, bedding, or drapery. You practically can't walk down the street without seeing a violation of this. 176e, the flag should never be fastened, displayed, used, or stored in such manner as to permit it to be easily torn, soiled, or damaged in any way. I can show you multiple examples of spare tire covers, stickers, and the like that violate this. 176g, the flag should never have placed upon it, nor any part of it, nor attached to any mark, insignia, letter, word, figure, design, picture, or drawing of any nature. Basically, anything you've ever purchased that proudly displayed, made in the USA, has probably violated this. 176i lists two main violations. First, the flag should never be used for advertising purposes in any manner whatsoever. Every commercial or flyer or postcard you've ever seen with a flag on it, usually promoting a sale that corresponds with a patriotic holiday, is in contradiction to this. Second, quote, "It should not be embroidered on such articles as cushions and/or handkerchiefs and the like, printed or otherwise impressed, on paper napkins, or boxes, or anything that is designed for temporary use and discard." Essentially, anytime you've celebrated a patriotic holiday, you're guilty of breaking this. And finally, 176j, no part of the flag should ever be used as costume or athletic uniform. This power of our flag code has been so buried in patriotism, patriotism, that our own military institutions do it. As well as certain political commentators who rail against the only players. So tell me, are we disrespecting the flag any more than you? In the past few months on social media, I've been referred to as anything from a spoiled, entitled brat to transphobic hate speech, to wishes of physical harm, to yes, even a death threat. Why? Because I show the flag the same level of respect that the political system shows to black, brown, Arabic, Islamic, Hispanic, indigenous, and LGBTQ people. Hate speech and threats only accomplish one thing. They strengthen my resolve. This country is not the bastion of freedom that some would like to pretend that it is. Until such timing exists, I will not be silenced. Black Lives Matter. Assalamualaikum.
Thank you, Alana. Our next speaker, please.
So Dennis Karius.
The louder we are just shows how upset we are. I'll try not to be real loud. But the louder we are just shows how upset we are from all the months that the studio has been closed in Albany Public Library's main branch. Wow. Oh, my name's Dennis Karius. When I pledged allegiance to the flag, we asked for liberty and justice for all. Wow. Our, our constitution, our Bill of Rights gives us freedom of speech, freedom of the press. And that's all we asked for at the library. If the, if the studio has been closed for about six months, and if they said, well, we just want to save money, that's no different than, let's say, next month when they say, we want to get rid of all books. Okay? Because that's going to save a lot of money. Well, you don't want to do that in a library. Well, then why would you want to do that with a studio? All of us love the freedom of speech, freedom of the press. To us, we like that better than the books that are in the library. So all we're asking is for the studio and for public access and government and education to all go in a good direction instead of going in a bad direction. education to all go in a good direction, instead of going in a bad direction. Why has it, has it been closed for about six months now? It just makes, it makes no, no sense. And actually, the Oversight Board, the PEG Oversight Board, um, it could go in a better direction if you had people on that board who wants it to go in a good direction, and actually, one of them is right here. The Vice Chair of the PEG Oversight Board should become the Chair, because he's been doing a show every week. He really wants public access to go in a good direction. So all we're asking is that the people on the Oversight Board, the PEG Board, be people who want it to go in a good direction, and anybody who does not, they should not be on that board. So I would just like to ask that the Vice Chair become the Chair of that board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Karius. Our next speaker?
Ms. Nancy Benedict.
My name is Nancy Benedict. I live at 31 Fourth Road in Delmar. Now, I'm here to speak about, uh, getting safer, more accessible, and cleaner bus stops, but believe me, we used to do a program for Channel Albany, and if Channel Albany were functional right now, we would be telling the people this over Channel Albany, too. Now, one of the problems with our bus stops is that cars are often parked in the bus stop, which, I guess it's not really illegal. We talked to Officer Brian Hawley of the police about it, and he said, "Well, they won't write any tickets unless there actually are signs, uh, saying, 'Don't park between signs,' or 'No parking here to corner.'" So, you know, the, basically, the police and the parking authority have their hands tied down, they can't stop people from parking in bus stops. Now, this causes a problem for the people who have trouble getting onto the buses, 'cause the buses can't pull up to the corner, or up to the curb where the people are waiting. The, the people have to go out into the street, and they have a much bigger step to step up into the buses, uh, because the buses can't pull up to the curb. And, and winter, uh, it also means that they can't plow out the bus stop right. Now, in winter, CDTA is responsible for shoveling out the bus shelters, but the homeowner or the business owner is responsible for shoveling out the sidewalk, uh, and the, uh, area between the sidewalk and the curb, nobody really is responsible for. Now, you just, not too long ago, passed an ordinance, uh, that, uh, the homeowner or business owner only has 24 hours after the end of a snowstorm to, uh, shovel the sidewalk, which I did speak in favor of. However, uh, you didn't address the issue of, uh, who is responsible to shovel fr- uh, from, uh, from, uh, from the sidewalk to the curb in front of a bus shelter, uh, that just hasn't been, uh, addressed at all, basically. Also, that is a complaint-driven, uh, issue, and if nobody complains about the sidewalks not being shoveled, it just doesn't get shoveled. Uh, and I also have heard from some people that they've called several times, saying that, uh, the sidewalk isn't shoveled in front of a particular house, and nothing is done about it. I've heard of that happening, too. Now, the, the area between the sidewalk and the curb is where there often is a big snowbank, because that's where the, uh, plow leaves a big bank of snow, and there's nobody who is responsible for shoveling it. This doesn't make sense. Uh, and, and the area between the curb and where people actually board the bus, especially if they, if the bus can't get up to the curb, that area, there often are ridges of snow left by the snowplow, so that's another problem there. Uh, and another thing, the, the area between the sidewalk and the curb is a problem to some people, people with disabilities, people in wheelchairs, even in spring, summer, and fall, because in a lot of places, that area is grassy, there's, there's grass, and in many cases, there's just a, a pole with a sign on saying, "Bus Stop," and there's no concrete slab there at all. Now, if you're in a wheelchair, it's hard to get a wheelchair over grass. And, well, it's hard to get a baby carriage over gr- grass for that matter, too. So something, there really ought to be slabs of concrete in the path between, in the path by a, a bus stop, not necessarily just the ones with shelters either. I mean, when there's a bus stop, there should be a, a concrete slab, a, a concrete path leading out to the street. And at many of the bus stops, uh, the, the curb cuts are in the wrong place, so if you're in a, a wheelchair, you actually get out at the bus stop, and you have to go down the street to get up on the, uh, the sidewalk, and that is dangerous, uh, if, you know, in, in the winter, when, uh, uh, a, a car can't always see a person in the wheelchair. So I wish that the Common Council would address these problems, and like I say, if Channel Albany were functional right now, we would be saying all of these things on Channel Albany, too, so that the public would know about them, but, uh, since, since we can't say them on Channel Albany, the public isn't finding out about them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Benedict. Our next speaker, please.
Antonio Worthy.
Assalamu alaykum wa barakatuh. My name is, um, Musla. I go by this given name, the common name in America, Antonio James Worthy. I represent, um, 26 South Swan Street, that's the Sheridan-Hollowe Dropping Center. I come to you as a simple Muslim, and speak, Insha Allah, a few words. I come to talk about a much serious, um, issue, as far as the, I guess one would say, to enforce the Islamic standard upon the building itself, 26 South Swan Street, the Sheridan-Hollowe Dropping Center, due to the fact that a great tragedy has happened to a man and a couple of other men in a very haram manner. This man, Imam Dawood Rafatullah. At one point in Boston, Massachusetts, he was strapped down with a voodoo doll and fed dog food to bewitch him. This was practiced upon a couple of people in Huntsville, Alabama, at the college that I went to while I was studying pastoral theology. It happened in the dorm that I was in to a young man named Abu Said, who I was bringing up in ministry. It also happened again to a man named Garchel Kirkpatrick, who was killed in a manner by getting his, excuse my language, ladies and gentlemen, getting his geni- his genitals cut off, and they killed him along the fence, doing the same thing, using a voodoo doll, and held him up against the fence where the man couldn't move, and they killed him in that same manner. So this man, Dawood, was held in this, in, in this homeless shelter, Pine Street in Boston, Massachusetts, in the same way, and they were feeding him dog food, which came from a canning company in Tennessee. So the plot was to kill him, extort all of his money, and embezzle all of his businesses, and erase him, and wipe out his entire family line, which includes the people that I grew up with in this world. So I, within simply saying, is it possible to enforce some kind of court order or city standard to Islamist, what we say in the Masjid, "Islamize the building with qurans and things like this," to get the truth to come out? A woman named Shamika, who is a, uh, an employee there, she stops me from doing things like burning incense around the building, because she knows it divulges the black magic that they've practiced in the building. She knows it divulges things like them throwing pig's blood up against the walls to depurify the building, to do things like commit murders, beat ups, things like this. Um, the other day, I was banned, I was banned from the place because she said I was setting a fire hazard when I lit African musk outside the window so that it would waft in. She knows that, uh, that, that I know what she's doing, so she doesn't even want me around the building. Yet, she's still trying to suppress the truth about this whole thing, and, and keep it from coming to the light. So basically, that's all I came to ask, is to get the ball rolling on this, to bring this whole thing to justice, because what happened to this man and these two other, and these two other individuals in the same manner needs not to happen to anyone else ever again. It happened in three different states and three different cities, and it was all along the same line, to basically stop the, 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 to, to, to stop these people from reporting what a group called Tain Ministries was doing. Their objective was to establish temples of devil worship up and down the East Coast. They've already, you, truth be told, started it. They did it in Boston, they were about to do it in the city of Huntsville, Alabama, where I'm from, in a neighborhood called Mason Courts, a, a, a impoverished, black neighborhood. They were unsuccessful, but what they were successful in doing was killing a lot of people in that manner, and getting away with it in the court system, because the local court gave these people permission to start devil worship in the community. So this, that's basically what I came here to talk about, and this is all.
Thank you so much for sharing with us this evening. Our next speaker, please.
Mark Ronan.
Madam President, Common Council members, first, I wanna wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, and hope spending time with your family brings you all closer together. I've said this before, and I'll say it again, there is a fine line between being persistent and being annoying. I'm trying to avoid crossing the line from simply being persistent about PEG Access. I wanna preface my remarks by saying, you all do a very good job as elected officials advocating on behalf of your constituents. Your job is not always easy, there are a lot of balls constantly being juggled, and you can't always focus on everything all the time. I also want you to realize that, that being said, I am acutely aware that PEG Access is but a small part of all the issues you are dealing with. So here it goes. I've spoken here many times, telling you about the problems with Channel Albany, and I have not seen any progress, so I'm getting the feeling that my words are falling on deaf ears. Hoping that's not really the case, here's another attempt to urge you all to make this better. I'm trying to figure out what you're trying to accomplish here. You need a goal. If you're trying to disenfranchise the creativity of many of the citizens in Albany, then you've succeeded. If you're trying to cause friction among some citizens of Albany, then you've succeeded. If you're trying to reduce government transparency, then you've succeeded. If you are trying to give me the silent treatment and frustrate the good people of Albany who are involved with moving Channel Albany forward, then you've succeeded. But, if you are trying to hire a new studio coordinator, you have not succeeded. If you are trying to get the PEG Access Oversight Board back in operation by reappointing the Common Council appointees so we can sign the oaths of office and move forward, you have not succeeded. And if you want the PEG Access Oversight Board to continue to do the business it is authorized to conduct, then I'm afraid to say, you have not succeeded. If you want the video and audio equipment in this room upgraded and new equipment installed throughout City Hall, you have not succeeded. If you want to have one of the missions of Channel Albany to be connecting with the community, you have not succeeded. So, to get this process moving, you need to be more communicative with the board members. When the board members request to speak with you, there should be the respect given to answer emails and have personal conversations with board members. You also need to determine who is a board member and who isn't. Are there, there are the two mayoral appointees who live outside the city limits board members? Only one can be. Many of you have very good relations with the mayor's office. Why not speak to the mayor's office to make them move on making a definitive decision? Why not offer up the needed legislation to reappoint the Common Council members to the PEG AOB? What is taking so long? I ask and get no response. It is frustrating for me and many others who need to use the studio and the equipment. If the PEG Ad-Hoc Committee can't make a decision on this matter, why isn't this being addressed by Common Council leadership? It should not take months on end to offer up the legislation. The Times Union article that I have here from October 20th, uh, makes reference that the appointments would be made by the end of November. Well, here we are, and I don't see anything on the agenda for tonight. This is why I, I'm, I've asked in the beginning of my comment period, what are you trying to achieve here? Because it doesn't seem like there's a goal. So please communicate, let us know, don't hold your cards so close to the vest where the board members are ignored when they simply come up to a Common Council member to have a simple conversation. We deserve at least that much. So thank you for your time, and once again, have a safe and healthy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ronan. That is our last speaker from the public. I want you all to know that, um, what has been said tonight by all of you is very important to the council members. It's very important to everybody who, um, is here, and we have not, while sometimes the wheels of progress grind slowly, I understand your frustration, but know that this has, and I under, I know you're frustrated, and I accept that, and I respect that, but also know that people have not been sitting by doing nothing. That is not the case, um, and I think there will be some, um, evidence of that this evening if you continue to stay, um, in the meeting. But also, just know that whenever any one member of the public comes to a Common Council meeting, please, I want you to know that it's not falling on deaf ears. I have spent 20 years in this body, and I will say that from my own experience, I hear very well, and I have been very responsive, and I know that other people that sit around this room, they don't come here just to be sitting in a chair. They come here, and they are responsive to people. Sometimes things happen in our own, in a timely manner that we want to see them happen, and other times, they do not. And I understand that this situation with PEG Access has been a very frustrating, um, situation. It's been frustrating for me. I had a program that I had started doing, that I was not able to, um, continue with. But, so it's not just you out there, some of us in here are very concerned about this, and have, um, moved to take action. So understand that we are one part of solving the solution, but there are others that have to participate in bringing this to, um, a solution. So just know that it is being worked on, and I heard someone say, "I hope 2018 will bring better progress for PEG Access." I believe that it will. Um, I just, uh, as, and I'm saying this because it has been something that has very, been very important to me, and I will, I along with you, will be watching to see the progress that is made. And tonight, I just wanna announce that next meeting for the Albany Common Council on December 4th will be my last meeting as President of the Albany Common Council. And what you have brought up tonight is something that, is an issue that's very important to me, and I want the council members to know, and other members of the public, that for the last 20 years, I've had the opportunity to sit here and listen to people and respond to people. But just for information purposes, for the council member, I, um, due to some retirement rules from New York State, I will have to resign as of December 8th, as President of the Council. So December 4th will be the last meeting that I will have the opportunity to preside over. At this, at that, um, point, I will share some comments with you, some parting comments with you, but I just wanted you to know that, um, I wish you all a very, um, happy Thanksgiving, and, um, I will look forward to, um, seeing you on December 4th, um, and at that-
Um, and at that time, I'll share some parting remarks with all of you. Thank you so much. That's my public comment for this evening. At this time, we'll move on to our consideration, to approval of minutes from our previous meeting. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam President. The common council has called you November 16th.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Mr. Conti, our local laws, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Local laws, please, General.
Thank you. Um, are there any reports of standing committees? Mr. Herring.
Yes, Madam President. The planning committee met November 16th concerning two items, the, um, extranet contract rate and contract issue, which was discussed and put on hold to another meeting, and the confirmation of Chris Spencer, um, the commissioner of planning. That discussion resulted in the con, uh, in the, the passage of that recommendation to the full council, the positive recommendation. Um, also, I will also notice a planning committee meeting now for December 13th, when again we will bring up the extranet contract and fee discussion, and also any other items, uh, that may result in the next week for the planning committee. Try to finish up before the end of the year.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Ms. Doshay.
Yes, I, uh, just want to note that the finance committee has had, uh, two meetings since our last meeting. In addition, the, uh, council has met in budget caucus, uh, and we will be discussing, uh, the results of those discussions shortly as we, uh, take, uh, the budget under consideration.
Thank you. Reports from the ad hoc committee? No? Okay. Now, we'll move to consideration of ordinances introduced. Mr. Igo. Please read the title.
An ordinance repealing and replacing chapter 353 of, uh, pardon, of the code of the city of Albany.
Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam President. The ordinance is referred to the law.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me for not standing. I recognize ordinance 44.112.17 for his introduction.
Please read the title.
An ordinance of the common council authorizing the execution of a license agreement with Swan Street Mixed Use LLC, an affiliate of the Albany Housing Authority for the use and occupancy of a portion of the city right of way in front of the property located at 155 Clinton Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Herring.
Yes, Madam President. I notice ordinance 45.112.17 for the purpose of introduction.
Please read the title.
An ordinance amending chapter 375 of the code of the city of Albany.
Excuse me. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam President. That ordinance is referred to the planning committee. And, uh, President, with regard to the new ordinance, the agenda are held with the exception of agenda and number nine by Councilman Doshay.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Doshay.
Thank you, Madam President. I notice ordinance 41111.17, and, uh, ask for a vote thereon.
I think you had some amendments.
I thought I noticed it for a vote, and then I make a motion to amend.
Okay. Clerk, please read the title.
Sure. An ordinance adopting the budget as presented by the mayor on October 2nd, 2017 for fiscal year 2018.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Doshay.
Yes, Madam President. Uh, I have presented, um, members of the council with a copy of, uh, an amendment, uh, to the proposed ordinance, which had been introduced previously, uh, and I would like to move to, uh, make those amendments, uh, to this ordinance.
Is there any discussion?
I need a second on it.
All those in favor? This is just to add the amendments.
All right.
Now, I'm asking, um, and you're now going to make some comments, is that correct?
Yes, I apologize for continuing standing. Um, uh, yes, so, uh, these, uh, we, I, I first want to note that the, uh, finance committee, uh, met with, and we were very, uh, uh, pleased that, uh, members of the administration, the department heads and unit heads, uh, came and met with the finance committee. We held over, uh, ten meetings, uh, and during the course of those meetings, we identified some areas, uh, uh, in which it was, uh, determined that it's appropriate for us to amend the proposed budget. Uh, and those are contained in the, uh, amendments, uh, that you have before you. Um, the, uh, the vast majority of these amendments are, uh, technical amendments, uh, simply errors in inputting or formatting, or s, minor improvements, uh, in formatting. Uh, we will later on be, um, presenting and voting on a budget intent, uh, memo, a resolution that will lays out, uh, a little bit more about, uh, those kinds of amendments. From a fiscal standpoint, there are, uh, several amendments. Uh, we, uh, identified three areas of revenue, uh, which we, uh, were included in the budget in error that are, uh, we will not be realizing this, uh, coming year. Um, uh, two of them relate to, um, fees in the clerk's office relating to the amusement, uh, tax, uh, and, um, also the privileged tax coin operator D, uh, fee, and so those total, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars. In addition, uh, computer-aided dispatch is funding, uh, that we do not anticipate receiving for a hundred and twenty, hundred, five hundred dollars, um, uh, a hun, a hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred dollars, excuse me. Um, and that is, uh, because, um, that was funding that was received from municipalities that, uh, participated in a consortium with us, uh, and those municipalities are no longer, um, participating, that moving, uh, to the, uh, county. So, that amount of money, uh, is, uh, not forthcoming. Um, in addition, uh, after discussions with the administration regarding the actual cost of the waste collection, curbside collection program, we determined, uh, that, uh, the revenues for that program should be reduced by a hundred and three thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars. Um, and that is, um, based upon a per-unit cost, uh, of a hundred and fifty-six dollars, uh, that is incorporated into this particular amendment. Uh, we did include some of the revenue, um, addition to that revenue for, in anticipation of late fees based upon the city's experience with that. So, uh, for these revenue reductions totaling over two hundred thousand dollars, we needed to find offsets, and in conversations with the administration, we have agreed that it's appropriate to increase the sales tax revenue, uh, that is anticipated. There had been a six hundred thousand dollar reduction in the, uh, proposed budget for, uh, sales tax revenues, uh, based upon, uh, where the, uh, first and second quarter returns were for 2017. Projecting that forward, it seemed appropriate, at the time the budget was introduced, or actually developed for printing, to actually have, uh, a six hundred thousand dollar reduction. Um, since the printing of the budget, uh, that, uh, we have recovered a lot of the, uh, loss, made up for a lot of that lost revenue, uh, and so it's a little bit more reasonable to, uh, expect that we will not incur that kind of deficit, uh, next year, looking year to, on year-to-year experience. So, a hundred and, uh, excuse me. A hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars is being added, uh, back in for revenue that still that allows basically a half million dollars in sales tax reduced from the two, what we expect to, uh, incur in 2017, because there have been warnings about internet sales impacting our sales tax revenue in the future. Uh, and so I, I still think that this is prudent because there is a half million dollar reduction in sales tax, uh, for next year. There's also two, uh, additional revenue, uh, that there's an additional revenue line. Uh, DCJS car theft prevention grants has been increased by sixteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars, and expenditures for the retirement contributions has, have been reduced by a hundred and four thousand, two hundred, uh, sixty-eight dollars, uh, and that is based upon actual projections provided by the controller's office. Uh, so, you know, the, the information that we get continues to be somewhat of a moving target, uh, so we are comfortable with that, uh, over a hundred thousand dollar reduction to offset the other, uh, revenue, uh, losses. We also identified two areas in which, uh, the division of you, the Department of Youth and Workforce are expecting some revenues, and housing and community development is expecting some additional revenues, and so, uh, those have been added to the revenue line, and then, uh, on the expenditure side, those monies, uh, are being put in contracted services until a determination is made as to, uh, where those might be best used, um, particularly in enhancing salaries, uh, through the E and A process potentially. Uh, I note that, uh, there are also amendments regarding the, um, count, common council budget that I'm going to leave to, uh, Mr. Conti to, uh, talk about, uh, rather, because I anticipate he's going to want to talk about them anyway, rather than duplicating his comments. Um, I move on. I just want to note that, um, we will, one of the technical amendments is we will be eliminating subcategories of supervisory, clerical, uh, professional, technical, uh, sub, sub totals, um, because it's noted that, uh, that has created some problems with, um, the allocation of salaries and, um, some errors, um, that we have experienced with, um, dealing with the new ERP system. Um, I want to note that, uh, I've also provided council members with a complete list of salary changes that will be, need to be made through the E and A system as a result of some inputting errors, uh, that were more fully explained in caucus. Um, and I want, and I want to note that, um, the, um, demolition fees, there is an inconsistency where in one place, um, the fees are listed as seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and another place, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've indeed determined that the appropriate amount is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that is being put in both places for consistency. We're also relabeling that title, uh, and also the, uh, the, um, expenditure side of it to include stabilization, uh, to further reflect our desire that those funds be used for stabilization as much as for, uh, demolis, uh, demolitions. And finally, I note that, um, significant fact is that, uh, after introduction of the budget, uh, we have identified that the, we have heard that the, um, fire department will not be receiving a safer grant, so a reference to that has been taken out of the narrative, um, but we have determined that the, um, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that is in the budget, uh, for, uh, safer grant, uh, will still be forthcoming because it is on a different calendar year, and we will receive that balance, uh, in 2018 before our grant expires. I believe that is it on the, uh, amendments at this particular point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doshay. Is there any other comments?
Yes, Madam President. The purpose is of finishing the explanation with the, uh, general question. Um, the common council budget itself, uh, the potential advantage of the agencies that the staff and agencies we've had, there's a opportunity to look at, uh, how the staff and council, uh, looking towards, uh, in the, uh, next term. So, the council, uh, budget, uh, we now keep funding, uh, from the current year. We have, uh, eliminated the position of, uh, proposed, we made the position of policy fiscal analysts, um, and we also changed the, uh, budget reduction to twenty thousand. We've also, uh, changed the type of C, which is, uh, the C, uh, and we do set out with a one thousand, one eighty-one, although that position has to be posted, uh, and hopefully go back before the new is added. Um, in a, the policy analyst position, we also looked at the research department, the research council position, and propose to provide those two functions into the full-time research, uh, council position, that, uh, gives a better opportunity to identify those and handle those functions, uh, on a full-time basis and provide better, uh, staff support of, uh, new research and policy research, uh, to the council, uh, and propose to establish that full-time position at, uh, sixty-eight thousand. Uh, in terms of the remaining funds, uh, savings that will be allocated, um, to adjustments in council salaries, insisted in the local law line with a one eighty-four, which, uh, provides for adjustments, uh, when adjustments are made to employee salaries, uh, we also moved funding to the temporary help line, and also increased, um, training and confidence line, uh, by thirty-five hundred, uh, in expectation that this can be used more by council members, uh, because of professional and, uh, and policy. Uh, so, the bottom line is that the council budget actually is the reallocation of funds to budget control, uh, and hopefully puts us in a better position, uh, to lead arguments and, uh, policies in the next year.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the budget? If not, I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the room.
Mr. Plarris.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Conti.
Ms. Doshay.
Ms. Fahey.
Mr. Flynn.
Ms. Goldby.
Yes.
Mr. Herring.
Mr. Igo.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Ms. Cornigay.
Yes.
Mr. Crasher.
Absolutely not.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
It's twelve affirmative, one negative.
What was the numbers again? I'm sorry. Thank you very much. The ordinance passes, uh, the, um... The amendments? Did we not just vote on the? Okay, this is new. Um, okay. So, now, we are going back to adopt the amended ordinance. Okay? Ms. Doshay. What is the, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to, uh, note especially for members of the public, um, some salient features of this particular budget. The proposed, uh, 2018 budget actually decreases expenditures by over a half a million dollars. This is on top of the six, three-point-six million dollar reduction that was built into this 2017 budget for over a four million dollar reduction in the budget, in the city's budget to, uh, since 2016. Uh, this is very, uh, impressive, uh, in these times, uh, but also necessary in light of the city's high property tax rate and continuing fiscal challenges. These, uh, this reduction has been achieved by the elimination of some full-time equivalent, uh, positions and including a vacancy savings that was recommended by the PFM Group, uh, report, uh, and, uh, which resulted in over a million dollar reduction in salaries in the 2018 budget, although at the same time, it includes a number of, uh, salary increases... time, it includes a number of salary increases for union members as a result of settled contracts, and a two percent increase for non-union employees of the city. The budget also includes six hundred and twenty thousand dollars in one-time revenue for the sale of the Queeman's property, over a six hundred thousand dollars reduction in retiree health insurance, and almost a quarter million dollar reduction in debt service. These revenues and savings are largely offset by some increases in workers' compensation and operating expenses. We had anticipated that there would be more of a reduction in workers' compensation, but what we have learned is that the contractor is aggressively closing out cases, so rather than having them continue on the books for long periods of time, a lot of them are being closed out, which we should see then savings in the future from that action in our budgets. There is a proposed tax levy increase of five hundred and fifty, a hundred thousand dollars, or about point nine percent. This is largely as a result of the reduction in other revenues, notably a one point two million dollar reduction in landfill revenue to wean us off our dependence upon that, to help balance our budgets, and a reduction in the anticipated sales tax revenue that we discussed earlier. While property tax rates are not set until after the adoption of the budget, it is estimated that the proposed tax levy increase for the Homestead Parcel assessed at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be about fourteen dollars a year. Generally, the Finance Committee and the council has found the budget to be reasonable and fiscally prudent. We do have the issue with regard to the relying on twelve point five million dollars again from the state for our fair share of state aid to make up for the pro-rata share being so low for the aid to municipalities, and also for the great number of tax-exempt state-owned land that is in the city. I think that most of us agree with the mayor's continuing to lobby for that, and we hope that it again will not be a spin-up as it has been in years past. I also want to note that the budget, we did hear comments from one individual during our two public hearings that have been included at the end of this report, and we are commending to the council, the administration to review those recommendations. In other comments that we have heard, not as part of the public hearing, we have heard, people talk about the PEG access support, and we have made sure that this again includes thirty-five thousand dollars in funding for PEG, and that's actually for hiring of staff. That money was not used at all this past year, although we put it in the budget. I note that the treasurer in his meeting with the Finance Committee had asked that his salary be reduced and distributed amongst his members, but there are limitations, members of his staff, but there are limitations in the city charter regarding the council's ability to deal with salary adjustments in, during the budget. The budget also includes a tentative capital budget that we have taken a look at. We do think that there are some areas where there may be some reductions, and that is being noted to the administration. However, the actual action on those capital expenditures will come in the spring when we review the bonding ordinances for that. With that, that completes my report, and I do ask for the support of the council in adopting this budget.
Are there any other comments? Any other discussion, Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going, yes, on the budget. I also wanted to, for council member Fahy, again, for the work responsibilities, to really thoroughly analyze, convey our questions, concerns, et cetera, back and forth, and get the information that we need, and able to make some adjustments, and I think, you know, she can sometimes be forceful in her requests, and sometimes people see her as a little bit urgent, but I think it's the role that you take on as chair on the task like this, and it is sincerely, really, with you. I think even, you know, I certainly have this, Julie, no conflict, you have more information, if you have this, whatever, but really sincerely, I think it's a role to take, and grant it through the community, and that we'll be able to, in the last two years of this council contrast, to approach to move the budget process forward in a way that I think involves the council more, gets information more, and I think this year has been a good example of building progress from last year. And hopefully, follow, you can continue in that direction, and make sure that, you know, the council is active, participating, and I think it's still more than we can do in terms of moving that direction. I think some of the staffing changes that we make in the budget related to the council budget hopefully will help us, put us in a better position, give us better resources to move in that direction, given we are going to, you know, a whole new class of members coming in, but hopefully this will be able to work together in ways that we need to. But, again, I think, you know, with this challenge, financial challenges the city is facing, realizing alone that, you know, we still have twelve and a half million dollar balance that we need to achieve, and I think that, you know, it's going to be difficult, but we are building our case, and we have thought, we have prepared, we have thought to make the case to the state in terms of where our needs are, to the extent that we can stay actually funded audit for a review, I guess, of the financial review or books, to look at our financial situation, and recognition to the government report for some more documents as part of this fiscal year, some of the developments in the coming of fiscal year, that financial assessment, let's do the period twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, so I think we can achieve communication of the states, understanding that we have a long-term need as far as enhanced state assistance, we have a city fund, and structural to be able to start the effort, so hopefully that communication, that our partnership with the state continues into twenty eighteen and beyond, as we continue to address our fiscal needs. I think it does, like, again, it continues to build on accomplishments in the past, it does reflect a reduction in spending for previous years, et cetera, in the second and second economy, it does reflect implementation of new technologies and efficiencies to save money, and move forward, and also reflects responsibilities that we're taking on our side through, you know, like, increasing property tax, I think, if no one wants to see, but, you know, it's part of what we have to do to act forward. One, also, we need to issue a lease disposal, it's been a difficult issue for some of us, moving forward, and we have had positive discussions, so that in the coming weeks, we're going to begin the process, putting together a volume base, so some of the quality of the process needs to be moved to the factors on that, and I think that's the way we need to go, to provide incentives for us to reduce our lease defaults, and, et cetera. There are a lot of challenges the city faces, you know, the projections of state deficit, control of impacts at all taxes, whether it's all reform, but we have, we have emotional calms in all people, we have to answer the question, but I think there's a whole, sort of, positive to explore, and appreciated work with Congressman Doshead, and also appreciated work in the distinction of certain members who they take part in the discussions, and also contribute to the actions that we have been doing. So, we have, I hope, yes, these personal topics will be settled.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? If not, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Plarris.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Doshead.
Yes.
Ms. Fahy.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Ms. Goldby.
Yes.
Mr. Herron.
Yes.
Mr. Igo.
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes.
Ms. Cornigay.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson, pardon me, Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
It's twelve affirmative.
Thank you very much. The ordinance passes, and congratulations on another year on Ms. Doshead of very hard work that you put in to make sure that we reached this, that we reached this deadline in passing the budget on time. Thank you so much. Let's see, now we'll move on to, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Oh, so that's the last item for ordinances, right? So, we'll move to resolutions introduced. Ms. Doshead, do we need to add the one, two, three, four, five, six?
You, you will, you will.
I'm going to add hers first and then add the others, because...
The first sixty-one, follow for me.
Right. Okay, Ms. Doshead.
I notice Resolution sixty-one, one twelve, seventeen, and ask for its passage.
Thank you very much. Please read the title.
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to an adjustment in salary for certain positions in the Department of Recreation for the 2017 budget.
Is there any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Ms. Plarris.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Doshead.
Yes.
Ms. Fahy.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Ms. Goldby.
Yes.
Mr. Herron.
Yes.
Mr. Igo.
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes.
Ms. Cornigay.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
It's twelve affirmative.
Thank you very much. Resolution passes. Mr. Conti, Ms. Doshead, who's introducing the?
Madam President, I'm asking majority consent. We are following Resolution to tonight's agenda, Resolution sixty-two, one twelve, seventeen R, related to E and A adjustments, Resolution sixty-three, one twelve, seventeen R, related to the council's question of ten percent resolution, sixty-four, one twelve, seventeen R, related to the state local tax deduction and federal tax reform, and Resolutions sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, one twelve, seventeen R, according to the other two appointments to the ten.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Ms. Doshead.
Yes, I notice Resolution sixty-two point one twelve point seventeen for introduction.
Please read the title.
Resolution of the Albany Common Council opposing limitations on the deductibility of state and local taxes as part of federal tax reform legislation.
That's being held, right?
No, I'm sorry, sixty-two against E and A. Is that what you?
Yes, that's the one you read.
I thought you were reading the salt.
No, sixty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that, it's labeled wrong then, because this is labeled, that is the salt.
My apologies. Resolution of the Albany Common Council.
Can you say the same thing? Can you give us a corrected sixty-two, please?
Resolution of the Albany, Resolution of the Common Council consenting to an adjustment in salary for certain positions for 2018 budget.
Let me see that. That was sixty-one.
Sixty-one, what was sixty?
Okay, there's been a lot of movement on these resolutions, so the numbers have actually been moved, so that, is that one correct? So, the one we're, sixty-one we have voted on, we're now voting on sixty-two, which relates, we're introducing sixty-two.
Was that, or is that really sixty-two?
Yes, thank you very much. Ms. Doshead, sixty-three.
Yes, Madam President, I notice sixty-three, Resolution sixty-three point one twelve point seventeen, and ask for its passage.
Thank you, clerk. Please read the correct title.
Resolution of the Common Council outlining its action and expressing its findings and intent with regard to the adoption of the fiscal year 2018, City of Albany budget is proposed in ordinance forty-one point one eleven point seventeen, as amended and titled in ordinance adopting the budget as presented by the mayor with amendments on October second, 2017, for fiscal year 2018.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Doshead.
Yes, for the benefit of members of the public present, I just want to note that this is basically a nine-page memo which talks about some of the things, memorializes some of the things I talked about earlier, explains our deliberations on the most significant issues, so it should be posted on our website, at, Mr. Campbell, will be posted on our website sometime soon, and will be incorporated into the budget as well. So, it is something that I think, if you're interested in knowing more about what we're doing, it's worthwhile reading.
Is there any other discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. Plarris.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Doshead.
Yes.
Ms. Fahy.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Ms. Goldby.
Yes.
Mr. Herron.
Yes.
Mr. Igo.
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes.
Ms. Cornigay.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
It's twelve affirmative.
Thank you very much. The resolution passes.
And, Madam President, I offer Resolution sixty-four, one twelve, seventeen R, ask for its passage.
Please read the title.
Certainly. Resolution of the Albany Common Council opposing limitations on the deductibility of state and local taxes as part of federal tax reform legislation.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
No.
Wait, okay, oh, wait, oh, all right, did I move too fast? Did I, was there some discussion?
No, no, I just want the whole man to, 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 to.
Okay, but was there any need for discussion? Did I miss a hand? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you very much. Resolution passes. Ms. Appliers. Mrs. Appliers.
Thank you, Madam President. I recognize for introduction and pass- I recognize for introduction and passage, Resolution, start with this one, 65, 112, 17R, as well as?
You have to do them one at a time.
Just one at a time?
Yeah.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please read the title.
Resolution of the Common Council appointing Akasio Wilson to the Cable Television Public Education and Government Access Oversight Board.
Is there any discussion? If not, all, oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
So there will be other resolutions offered for introduction and passage, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to highlight that the PEG Ad-Hoc Committee did meet back in October. The purpose of the meeting was to meet with members of the Oversight Board to discuss barriers to the operations of PEG, but also to discuss the reappointments of council appointees to the PEG Board. And based on those discussions had with members, as well as listening to members of the public, some of whom are in the room and some who have left, the PEG Ad-Hoc Committee debriefed and made a decision to move forward with the appointments that will be before you tonight. We feel strongly that based on some of the challenges that this body is facing, we feel strongly that these members will work in the best interest of PEG to help move things forward so that this body can continue to do the important work that they need to do on behalf of the community. I also want to just take this opportunity to say that contrary to some of the perspectives shared by members of the public, members of the Common Council, including members of the Ad-Hoc Committee, care deeply about the PEG Board, the operations of PEG, and have spent countless hours working on trying to improve the work by investing in the people who do the work. And I also want to point out, as Council President mentioned, that this is a three-legged stool. It does require council participation, it requires participation from the mayor's office, but it also requires participation and patience from the public. And so if the three legs of that stool are not in a position to work together, we will never get this body functioning the way it needs to, it needs to. So I just want to reiterate the fact that there are members of the Common Council who have stepped up to own improving the work of PEG, and we hope that some of the work that we have started to do will materialize in a way that it is, it is in plain sight for the community. We do hear your concerns, you have not been neglected, and we are, we are doing our best to address your concerns, so thank you for your patience.
If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Co-sponsor, anyone else want to be a co-sponsor? Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Resolution passes. Congratulations to Mr. Wilson, and Ms. Apliers.
Thank you, Madam President. I recognize Resolution 66, 112, 17R for introduction and passage.
Please read the title.
Resolution of the Common Council appointing Donald A. Hyman to the Cable Television Public Education and Government Access Oversight Board.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And co-sponsor, Ms. Goldby, and several others, please note. Okay, thank you very much. Resolution passes, and congratulations to Mr. Hyman, our number, Ms. Apliers.
Thank you, Madam President. I also recognize for introduction and passage, Resolution Number 67, 112, 17R.
Please read the title.
Resolution of the Common Council appointing Tracy Ann Gordon to the Cable Television Public Education and Government Access Oversight Board.
Is there any discussion? Any co-sponsors? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations to Ms. Gorman. Mr. Herron.
I'm going to work with you. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to.
Oh, I forgot. Please read the title.
Resolution of the Common Council confirming the appointment of Chris Spencer as the Commissioner of the Department of Planning and Development.
Is there any discussion? All those, any co-sponsors? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? These are all co-sponsors, right? Hands that went up. Thank you very much. The resolution passes. Congratulations to Chris. Mr. Conti.
Madam President, the meeting has been adjourned. And, Madam President, I'd like to make the motion for a capital correction. Resolution, just as I said, to the 61, the, 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 the,[1753.12]